Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to order Tuesday, July 11th, 2017 at 7:05 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the nation of the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Armond.
Here.
Councillor Candelora.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Manna.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Motion to approve the previous minutes for June 20th, 2017, Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second. No correction. Seeing none, roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Armond.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Manna.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I'm saying.
Sorry?
He was mayor of the city.
Amendment to Water Pollution Control Authority agenda, correspondence, citizen's statements under Water Pollution Control Authority. Unfinished business, none. Update to request to connect to Sanitaris Sewers, 1565 Middletown Avenue, Whitehall Road/Middletown Avenue, Sanitaris Sewer Extension.
Good evening. This is a follow-up to a couple of discussions we've had regarding capacity in the Whitehall Middletown Avenue sewer running down Route 17. We've had a request to connect the existing, the old Mill Pond Tavern into the Sanitaris Sewer line, and it brought up issues of looking to what does the ordinance allow and not allow. Basically, the ordinance allows existing structures funding on Route 17 to connect if they went through certain steps and certain findings were made by both the town, Eschore Health District, and the state DEP. We subsequently found out, finding or ruling from DEP that they're no longer involved in any of the issues regarding the Sanitaris Sewer line restrictions. They basically put it on the town, and it's seen that the grant loan involved in pay for the Whitehall Middletown Avenue project, conditions that they originally imposed no longer apply, and it comes back to the town WPCA to define sewer service areas and allow connections and the like. At the last meeting, we talked about the issue of capacity in the Route 17 line, and I said I'd try to take a look at the initial studies, reports, and see what's happening at this point. And basically, should be on the desk before you, should have got the email. Now, just briefly walk you through it. It was back in 1990 that the initial study was done, and areas along Route 17 were analyzed regarding the need for sanitary sewers. They're shown on the first, fourth page in, there's a map that shows 1 through 6 service areas, study areas. And basically, the findings were that areas 3, 4, 5, and 6 required sewers immediately, essentially. Area 2 had some poor soils, and it was recommended that capacity be reserved for that area, which is basically all Reed Scap Road East, the Hollymar, Oxbo, Burn Cliff areas, about 120 homes. And finding was that Area 1 on there, generally the soils were okay, wasn't a real problem, it didn't even be included. And there were 630 homes identified that required service, including all areas of 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And an additional, I think it was 30 homes in Durham and 20 homes in Wallingford that bordered on these areas, it was recommended to include capacity. No agreement between the towns for it, but it was, it's part of the study, it made prudent sense to look at that at the time. As part of design, it was recommended 10-inch line be put in Route 17 at minimum slope, and that basically has capacity for about 750 homes, equivalent wise. So there's about 120 homes that were unidentified that capacity remained for. When we went to the file design, it looked at a little more in detail, which is, there's a map, initial future sewer service areas, it's a couple pages after that, and find, sort of laid out who the capacity was reserved for in that line, in Town Route 17. So it's basically the Whitehall Middletown area, the areas 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 initially identified, Area 2, the reserve area, and Oxbo. And it tried to put some, defined better that extra 110 to 120 homes, and identified 65 homes along Route 17, and about 45 homes in the Deepwater Alley area. Even though those areas were not defined as needing sewers even in the future, they had been studied, they were some of the worst areas in town, so it tried to give some definition for the capacity was reserved for. What I've subsequently done is look at what our flows are, and flows vary year to year, and I try to take a look at some of a weather year, which is the worst condition. Look at the flows that we're seeing, and basically, sort of cut to the chase, what I'm finding, that of these seven, there's about, the equivalent of about 50 homes of infiltration inflow, leakages that get into the system, is unaccounted for water. We get a big storm, there's the holes in the manhole, people may have a pump in their basement that pumps the sewer, leakage in the lines may occur, so that equates to about 50 homes, roughly, and again, a cursory overview of what I looked at. So, of what we thought was initially looked at for about 750 homes is, that result is about 700 equivalent homes remaining capacity for. And, just sort of jump back, get the number, and about 350 are connected to date, and there's about three capacity remaining for 350 additional units. Of those units, if you add up all the areas identified in that initial, future sewer service area map, that's about 750 homes, which, it doesn't show Wallingford and Durham homes, which brings it up to about 800, which, again, it's not capacity for. If you negate the, or don't include the Durham and Wallingford homes in that Area 1, it identifies about 700 homes, which is about what there's capacity for. And again, that includes the existing service area where sewers were installed, reserving capacity for the Burn Cliff, Reed Scap Roadies, that area with about 120 homes, and reserving capacity for 65 units along Route 17.
What is the hookup cost currently?
Well, currently, single-family home, it's $12,300 for special connection fee. All the areas that were provided sewers and served by sewers, they paid the assessment of $12,300. So, in a nutshell, there's not as much capacity, you know, I was hoping to find that the flows have gone down, and it'd be a little extra capacity. There's not, there's basically capacity, the way I see it, for the area that we provide sewers to, and the reserve, we're keeping the reserve area 2, the 120 homes, and then existing homes along Route 17. I mean, that count.
And that's it?
It's pretty much it. And again, the issue in all these things is, and it happened in the initial sewers that were installed in the 70s, when the sewers were installed, they were looked at providing capacity for a good portion of town. That's been scaled back, I'm going to give you, when we restarted it, the area that goes to Bramford, we originally had capacity for about 1.3 million gallons a day. But again, when they did the treatment plant upgrade, we had to pay for our capacity, we basically, we ended up requesting 500,000 gallons per day capacity. We sort of, we minimized the area. That happens with time, and it depends on, again, there's law policy decisions, funding decisions as well. The unknown is if, again, the Area 2, the Oxbo, Hollymar area, who's going to pay for sewers? When they were installed, there was grant money and loan money from the state, that doesn't exist. But the original sewers are put in the 70s, it was basically 90% funding, it was, the towns were only paying 10%. That's just decreased more and more, and any other sewers now, if we're looking for sewer extension requests, primarily on the benefited property owner. And they get very expensive. So, it's unknown whether that'll ever happen, but I guess the prudent thing is to try to reserve some capacity, you know, for the problems there.
So that we are maxed out? If we're going to reserve our capacity for the?
Again, and this is where the fine detail comes. If some, if a single-family house comes in along.
Right.
17, okay, I mean, we have capacity for those along there. And maybe, you may, we've had four, I think, four connections in the past 20-plus years.
Wow.
A lot of those homes along Route 17, the sewer line, some areas is very deep, may be a rock, and some of those are on the other side of Route 17. So, that cost, there's not a stub into those properties, they have to pay for an extension to connect to that line, however deep it may be. So that sometimes makes a cost prohibitive for those homes to actually physically connect.
Because the $12.3 is the fee that they pay to the town, but then they still have the cost of.
And they have the cost of the connection.
Right. So it's not just the $12.3.
And again, if you get in Route 17, it's not like you're doing some little local road with a main road connection.
Right.
Some of those are pretty expensive. The feasibility may be, you know, a lot of times is you can make a repair on site. Some of the soils are pretty good along Route 17, you know, along the Farm River, they're good soils. There's, you can't say there's a bit of this yes or no.
Kurt, in trying to follow the last page in the handout you gave us, so, under the original study, if you look at the Mansfield Pump Station average daily flow, and we figured, somebody figured 213,304 gallons? But then you go to actual Mansfield Pump Station peak daily flow is 532,948.
Well, that's actually what I.
What, so what are we seeing here?
In order to get that, basically, I have weekly, weekly tallies, I had to come down to daily tallies, and I, when I say actual, it's, I had to, I put a factor of four times the average daily, to try to come up with something to peak it. Because what we're looking at all the way through here is a peaking issue. The average daily flow, you could, if it trickled in at a steady rate over the whole day, it wouldn't be an issue, you could put a whole lot more homes in there. It's really the peaks that we're looking at, you know, you get the morning rush.
Okay.
Afternoon rush. And I didn't cover it here right now, but the other issue that sort of ties into there is there's, all this information I'm getting is based upon the meter flow of the main provided pump station, which also takes the Tuckett Woods and the Norfolk Center area. So I'm having to try to apply some reasonable judgment factors to that. I'm pretty confident, because I think we have water meter readings for the businesses in Norfolk Center and the Tuckett Woods, what their actual flows are, their water consumption is, so that has pretty good data for that.
So then a reasonable conclusion would be, if we wanted to leave it for single-family homes, we really wouldn't want to start opening up businesses along 17?
And I got to tell you, I actually, the ordinance, and I'm back and forth trying to read it and interpret it, it's for existing structures, I think is the way it says in there. And here it says 65 homes, and how do you interpret that? Structures, you know, when you have something existing, is that allowable or not? I mean, I, that's more of a legal question with Pat. I will say, I've tried to, my count was a little higher than the original study in terms of the homes that are out there in the Whitehall area. They did the best count they could because mapping wasn't as good. I utilized GIS mapping, and there's that colorized version that shows who's connected, who's not connected. There may be some undeveloped lots, but I try to count them all, because I'd rather be a little on the high side than the low side and come down with a problem later. Another little thing I know has changed over time, originally there was a subdivision just north of the Post, the Norfolk Post Office, that sort of had approval to connect the sewers. Well, that's since, that property's been since acquired by the Water Department, so that's sort of taken out of the picture. I didn't factor that into there, I just, you know, 10, to be honest with you, you know, 10 houses or 15 houses doesn't change all that much, it's just something that cumulatively adds to the whole.
Kurt, commercially used like Mill Pond Tavern, would that be the equivalent of a home, or is it going to be greater?
No, their initial estimate, and I have sort of gone back to see if they can look at water same places, was about the equivalent of about, I think, 13 or 14 homes, you know, in terms of consumption. And again, the issue there too is, it's a peaking factor, you know, that's spread out constantly over a whole day, that's easy to take. Everything really determines the peak of what evolved is discharged. And again, it's just like infiltration inflow, if you have a perfect, you know, you got an eight-inch rainstorm, and then everybody's using everything, that's the biggest strain on the system. The good news, and I'm going to throw it in now, we had in the sewer budget, we upgraded the pumps, and the pump capacity is pretty good. We, they were initially put in a smaller pumps, or a smaller pumping capacity with the plan to upgrade, and we did that. And right now, knock on wood, everything is, the capacity's there, just like, I think I said, near 600 gallons a minute pumps, and that's what we have in there, and they're functioning very well. But again, it, the hardest, 10, 10 homes here, you know, if it's 10 homes, that really doesn't make a difference in total. It's 10 here, 10 here, 10 here, 10 here, that's where the decision-making has to happen, the policy decision, because if 10 leads to 50, well, that's a different, different issue.
So what are you really saying? Can Mill Pond connect or not? I'm still not clear.
Okay. It could tie in out tomorrow, and that's, that's not the issue, because 13 homes, I don't, that's my opinion, it's not a deal breaker. It's, the bigger issue is the policy decision, if you're opening that up to somebody up the street, somebody, somebody along the line to do a bunch of cumulative.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not doing that, you're still within the way it was written, existing structure.
And that's why I'm going back to the ordinance, you know, how that's interpreted, and how that's applied, because across the street.
Rosa Bianca.
Yeah.
That was an existing structure, correct?
Well, the existing, but that's not what they wanted to tie in, they wanted to build a whole new structure and tie it in. And the same thing applies to Mill Pond Tavern.
Is he built, built in an additional structure for the Mill Pond Tavern?
He had approval, that was his whole approval, was to tie in a big facility. And then in the end, they sort of modified it, they never really came back to ask if they could connect that one little structure.
Rosa Bianca, you're talking Rosa Bianca?
Yeah, yeah.
But when, when the gentleman was here for the Mill Pond, he was asking if he could build an addition and tie that in too.
Yeah, addition to the building is there already.
And that's, again, there is an ordinance, I mean, and I think the ordinance pretty much defines, limits who can connect, and that's not, it's not about ordinance in terms of that, and because of our capacity limitations. I said that was when I was, you might want to ask Pat or, I always write it as existing structures.
So you're saying, so, so as far as policy is concerned, what would Town Council have to evaluate in order to make this dynamic work?
Policy in terms of, you know, there's, there's a limited capacity, and basically, who gets to use it.
I see.
Again, there is an ordinance, and the fact that, does try to attempt to do that. Do you want to live with that ordinance and apply that ordinance to limit who connects in there?
The existing building, you're saying, or part of the?
Existing buildings, right. But there's always, you know, again, there's not a whole lot on there that could tie in there, other than residential. Again, what I was sort of, in my mind thinking, okay, we have Mill Pond Tavern, and we have across the street, there's a potential vineyard expansion, how does that equate in the whole picture?
Well, I think that, well, each one you have to look at individually, but the Vineyard has got good soils up there. I think Mill Pond Tavern's had failures two or three times. So I don't think there's any expansion at Mill Pond Tavern.
Yeah, well, they had, they came forward, they had an estimate, I think within the neighborhood of $100,000 to put a new system in, you know, and that was the question, came back to what's, can you make a feasible repair?
Yes.
Pretty much, a lot of times you can make repairs, but it's feasibility of it, and that, they had an estimate of connecting in for about $25,000, plus whatever, I think it was about $25,000 special connection fee at the ballpark, so it might be about half the cost to connect the sewers. They do have some issues, engineering issues they have to look at in terms of.
Yeah, I mean, they got to cross the.
They got to cross a bridge, and they got to deal with that bridge, and how they protect that. It's an easy line to pump across here, but they have to freeze protect it, that's the biggest issue. So, I mean, all in all, I had, there's infiltration inflow in there, but I had to sort of do the overview, because to do a detailed analysis requires a lot of study and monitoring, and it's a very expensive thing. In the old days, there used to be some state funding to help you with it, but that doesn't exist. It's there, and it's every system. To be honest with you, our system is tighter than all the systems we discharge today. My, my thinking is, if that might be the Tuckett Woods area that was installed in the early 80s, I don't know much about it, but that's part of the. So, that's pretty much my finding, and again, it's back to that sort of, that whole policy issue.
So worst-case scenario, so let's say we started and we said, everybody can hook in. We run, you know, and at the current rate of the existing houses that have a right, they have a right to hook in, or they met the criteria to hook in, they're hooking in at a rate of like, one every five years?
Well, pretty much, we got, I think it was four.
Yes, yes.
So, an average of one a year?
No, one every five years.
So, one every years out of it, and then you have to put a bigger pipe in the road, or?
He said there was four.
You're talking about houses on Route 17?
I'm talking about.
You're not talking about houses in the designated areas for which the sewer service was put in?
Sewer service in, those are counted, those should all be able to hook up, you know, that's part of that 700, the 700 number that they came up with basically includes all the areas served by sewers.
I don't want to confuse the number 4 you're using with houses within the designated service area. The 4, if I'm understanding you correctly, are four houses total have connected along 17.
That, that's correct.
Outside of the designated service area.
That's correct.
So they've tied in because it was more feasible, Eschore Health and everybody determined that it made more sense to do.
That's correct, it came before the WPCA, it went to DEP at that time, they, everybody made the ruling that that was a more feasible, and trying to make.
So now that gets easier with the state out of it, because it would never, none of them have to go back to DEP.
DEP has ruled that that's not.
So now it's like, probably going to be determined, oh, the system costs 30,000, and we can tie in the sewer for 12, sorry, there may be more tying in.
And that's pretty much the criteria that the WPCA looked at in the past, you know, it was, WPCA is a determination whether it, you know, feasibility, you know, if the system's got astronomically expensive, the judgment was.
What about those new homes in Bridgewater? Are they able to connect?
They're on their own.
They can never connect?
No.
No, because they weren't existing?
But that's why they were larger lots with, you know, engineered systems.
So they have septic?
All septic.
They all have, they have septic, and then, of course, they have pretty good soils up in there too. But again, the whole thing, it's a policy decision in terms of, like there was all, there is limited capacity. The ordinance defines, you know, pretty much who it's reserved for. And then again, if it was, if it was single-family homes, it was, I think it was a little more straightforward. Something like a Mill Pond Tavern or a Vineyard, how do those apply? That, that becomes a little more difficult interpretation with the ordinance and application of it.
Well, the ordinance notwithstanding, we're, if we're, we can't go over peak capacity either way, so.
Yeah, and what I'm saying all along, that they pretty much mirror each other. I mean, they do seem to fit pretty well. Again, the, the issue is, we just don't have capacity for Wallingford and Durham, but there's no agreement, there's nothing binding, that was part of, that was part of the study, as the comments have the same to say, but let's look at it while we're doing it. In that area, the Deepwater Alley area, they didn't have a problem, that was identified in the report, it was just, it was an allocation of what we thought was reserve capacity in the Route 17 line for sort of the next worst area. I don't know where you want to go with it, but that's. I mean, what I have is, I mean, I could check with the health district, are the findings still consistent in Area 2, which is the Oxbo, Hollymar lane? It's been 25 years since the study was done, what's, how's it look for repairs? I mean, are there many repairs, or problems, you know, what are they seeing?
You don't have a health district.
That's part of the decision-making process.
Now, on the discharge, that's going where? North Haven?
I was North Haven.
So, we're paying North Haven, right? X amount. So if we're paying them, for sure that we know what the discharge is by the amount of money we're paying this town?
We know what the, yeah, we know what the discharge is.
You get a monthly rate?
And that's all metered.
Yeah, but there's other areas that go to North Haven other than.
Mansfield Drive comes into the pumping station up.
Mansfield Drive pumps up, and then it goes by gravity, goes down, put the, by, front of a firelight.
So that.
They all connect together.
The Whitehall Sewer. Or the coming down 17.
Yeah, I mean, that, it's metered, it's sub-metered. But everything that comes down Route 17 and Norfolk Center all goes to Mansfield Dry Pump Station. That's where the meter is for that collective area.
Yeah.
They don't have, we don't have them along Route 17, we just have them at that location. And again, I'm just throwing out, looking for direction, possible alternatives are to check with the health district, what are the, you know, have there been issues in that Area 2 that we're reserving capacity for? Do they recommend we still stand with the findings that were done in the initial report? You know, hold the capacity, I mean, it might. Hold the capacity, I mean, it might.
I have a question that may or may not be relevant to this, but the restaurant that is now a pad further down, uh, the pizza place that burnt down.
The VFW. The old VFW.
That's not sewed.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's all septic.
That was all septic, oh yeah, that was my question, yeah.
The other variable, um, school, you know, uh, it was two schools there originally, I mean, they're connected to public water, public sewer. Now we have one school and the community center. There's always some variation in the uses in, in, in the business or commercial type areas. But it's pretty consistent over the past several years and those are the numbers I use based upon the flow. There could be some variation in there.
Is that school, um, is that metered or how do you, how do we bill them?
We bill them based upon, uh, yes, they're, they're public water.
Okay.
So, I get.
Kurt, at this point, I, I think it sounded like one of the missing pieces is a, a, an opinion from Pat then at this point in terms of structure going forward. So when they're faced with this issue.
Well, it's the ordinance, how does that apply, um.
I mean, that's what you're looking for, right? Guidance on the structure.
The unusual one is, you know, how would you apply it between Reston Farms and say, Rosa Bianca Orchards? How does that, you know, aspirate and how would that apply? A single family home living, that's pretty easy, you know, that was accounted. Is that a little bit of variation in there then?
Have you changed Reston Farms since it's not a restaurant anymore?
Changed it.
In their flow capacity?
Well, they generated a number, their engineer, um, came up with an estimated flow and that's, that's what I use at this point. They're not, they're not connected, so there's, you know what I mean? I'm not billing them at this point.
Though their reserve was in there though. Their reserve was fitted in there.
And again, when, when this was all done, they didn't get, didn't get down to detail of that. Pretty much it was that one structure that really changes everything. It's, it's pretty much a residential cap and homes. That one, the only difference is, uh, oh, oh, Reston, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the pond that, Reston Farms, yes, I did back that off. Because that was really counted as forty units because it was a banquet facility. They've lost that right, I mean, they, it's a horse stable. I counted them as twenty because it's basically one unit break.
That's probably really high.
Yeah, well, and I'm trying to be conservative. I will say I'd rather overcount a little bit.
Plus they're on septic too.
They're on septic and they, right now, they're not connected then and they have, I'm just reserving.
You're really sitting on an extra twenty right there.
I, I'm, I'm holding twenty because that's because of the zone and I'm trying to be conservative. I wanna, on my end, count a little high rather than a little low.
So technically, technically you could fit Rosa Bianca and Mill Pond in under that.
And, and I told you.
And still have plenty to spare.
That subdivision north of the post office, that, we did reserve capacity for that because it was approved by the WPCA. Everyone forward, the water company bought it. That's changed, but, um.
So those are, those are two, those are two you really, you really have to look at.
I'm, I'm holding a little reserve there. That's, that's correct.
Did Reston Farms pay an assessment?
No.
None at all?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, they did, yes, they did. They paid the assessment and it was, their assessment was, was done by appraisers. We had hired an appraiser that came up with what the, the estimated benefit was for a banquet facility. What the number was, I don't remember, but it was a special look at that the WPCA did for, um, I think that firehouse and the ARS cap, they came up with a number. Because it'd be unusual with properties.
But Reston Farms, where it was, if it got sold and that horse farm got knocked down, they're allowed to tie in to the units? Or were they, are they, like, what did the property pay for? Like, if it paid for forty units?
They did pay for forty units. I know it was a much lower number, I mean, I give that.
Okay.
I just remember what, everything that went.
But that's the thing, they're in the area that would be allowed to tie in.
Right, and I counted them because they're in our forty zone.
If they sold the property and someone wanted to develop it.
Right.
They would be allowed to tie in.
Yes, and I, and I counted them in the flow number.
Right.
The seven hundred units, I included twenty for that. That, maybe twenty homes could get built there, I mean, trying to be on the conservative side.
Is that what your estimating could be developed there if the horse farm was eliminated?
Yeah, yeah, based upon acreage.
What is it, about twenty-five acres?
It's about, it's about twenty acres. There's the wetlands and everything else, so it was a reasonable number in terms of potential. And I, I think it's probably on the high side, but I'd rather be on the high side of the count. So just trying to get, do you want?
Just need clar, you need clarification from us as to what direction?
What direction, what the next step is, um.
All right, I was hoping I wasn't gonna have to ask this question right now, but to belabor the point. So I heard, like, it was my impression that we are, are at peak capacity.
No.
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 Okay, we're not there. Think, we're not there.
We're nowhere near there.
We're nowhere near there.
We could be if all the houses.
We could be if everybody that is eligible to collect, I mean, to, to connect.
Everybody tied in.
They do connect, then we are at a potential max capacity. Okay.
Yeah, no, we, we definitely have room for everybody that we've identified.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
That's it.
And again, you can see on that, that colorized map, who's connected and who's not. Gives you a feel for it. What I've seen is the, where the sewer is connected, generally when the property sells, the mortgage company and bank will require the property connected at this point. And they just, they trickle in, you know, there's not a whole lot of them connecting and I, I don't give them here anymore. It just drips and dries.
Even in the, the areas that are designated, that's what you're saying, there's not a lot that are connecting there that are allowed to connect?
Well, the ones that connected, most of them connected early on.
At the beginning.
Right, and then they've been, like I said, when it's property sold, the mortgage company requires that property to be hooked up. Fairly I've seen that.
Well, one comment that you made earlier, I'd like to see you follow up on, which is to contact East Shore and find out if there's any problems with any of the existing hookups.
Yeah.
I think that's very important.
That Area Two, that's a reserved area, see what they're, what they've seen in the last twenty-five years. That could give us a good indication of how valid the study was. I mean, because the back, when the study was done, you know, it was a limited study, they did some soil testing and they looked at some historical data. That's what they had at that one. Did you want any follow up in, in terms of Pat interpretation of the ordinance or application of the ordinance to?
It sounds pretty clear to me.
Are you spoken by Max, so?
Next is, uh, initially about the Reston, uh, I mean, the, the Mill Pond Tavern, the feasibility issue of, they basically, he concurred that it's probably more feasible to connect to sewers. Not, not the rest of this, no.
But then the other, the other bigger question is, you know, I think we could easily let existing buildings tie in. But if the, you know, if the Mill Pond was gonna do some kind of a banquet facility or something and they need that tied in as well. You know, are we gonna let that tie in? You know, I mean, we gotta look at, and then, and then once you open up the new, new stuff there, you have to allow new stuff everywhere.
Yeah, and then, then that's, if you wanted to put an addition on, I mean, I don't know how to interpret that, you know, or an expansion, you know, with existing structures. Well, how does that apply to existing structures as an addition?
I hate to beat a dead horse, but I think Mill Pond's, um, how can I say it? It's already, it's got failed problems, um.
Septic problems.
Yeah, it's had failed septic problems for the thirty years or thirty-five years that I've known it. Versus a new structure coming in, say through Orchard, which has good soil up there. And they should be able to put in a sys, a system that should handle that. Versus, you know, and there's a lot of other soil along Route seventeen that, that is fairly good that can handle probably septic systems. So we have to look at it as.
Absolutely.
Can you do it? And we have to go with East Shore's house recommendation that, yeah, it, it's, there's problems there and it'd probably be more feasible to hook up to the sewers. So if you're getting their recommendation like that, any new structures that come in, we could look and see if there's enough land there and enough good soil there to hook up. So we could do it on a, basically on a one-on-one basis.
Yeah, and I think the concern is, you know, so it's a consistent policy that protects the line, I mean, uh, so we don't. Again, we, one structure, I don't, that's not really the issue. It was just the Mill Pond Tavern, it's, I don't see, again, I don't see that being the issue. The question is moving forward for clarity and inconsistency. That's the bigger issue I see.
I think it's each engineer that designs each building and each system.
Yeah, and, and, and sort of my question, you know, if the ordinance is clear enough, do we need to do anything to define that? I mean, for future generations going forward, so that there's a clear insight to, you know, the intent.
We're close to capacity based on what Kurt is telling us. If we allow Mill Pond to tie in, build another building and tie in, I don't see what rationale we have for saying to the vendor, you cannot tie in your new building, whatever they have planned. And the potential for the horse farm no longer being a horse farm and going back to a banquet facility or going to residential property and being twenty or whatever number of, of residential homes, they have to tie in. We're pushing the limit of capacity for that sewer line. And while it's not a problem with just the Mill Pond site, differentiation between that site and every other site is not a simple thing. Other sites are gonna come in with an engineer who's going to give us a report, it's going to say, the soils are terrible, you can't put a septic system in here. They've got to tie in. Where can you draw, where do you draw the line when we've got a limited capacity? So while I'd very much like to see Mill Pond Tavern reopened and flourishing as a business, I don't really see how we justify that one property getting the benefit of the sewer system that nobody else can use, including homes along seventeen unless they can demonstrate an inability to make a repair on their site.
Is that the only way they could tie in is if they demonstrated an inability to redo it there?
That's, the ordinance says they have to basically, a finding that it's not feasible, you can't make a feasible repair.
But then again, you know, we're not, the trickle-in of people hooking up is really slow. So you have somebody with an immediate desire versus the unknown future desire to hook up.
That's not an unknown future desire, it's an absolute, it's gonna be an absolute necessity for the homes that are within designated areas that the sewer system was designed for. When those homes turn over, the buyer's bank is gonna require that the home be connected to septic, apart from just sewer, even if the septic system is working perfectly.
Would you like me to check with the health district regarding that too?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we need to have a solid list of questions that you go back and get the solid answers for, whether, yeah.
I'm not gonna have follow-up questions, I know that much.
Yeah, and I think you should all sit and get all our questions answered, what East Shore Health, the opinion from the attorney. Because to me, there's a lot of variables here and I agree with Joe.
And Mill Pond, and if they add something else, that's, that's a variable, we don't know if they're gonna add.
Exactly.
They are gonna.
And he said he was gonna add.
If he's able to develop the way he wants, he will add onto that facility. And we know that Rosa Bianca Vineyards wants a bigger tasting room. And we should encourage the business to do that.
And I vaguely remember during the time with the vineyard, they were talking like three hundred gallons or something per seat. You know, that's what they were going off of at that time. So I think some of these, you know, questions need to be answered before. And I, I can't make heads or tabs of all these different.
Yeah, I agree, I, a lot for me to understand there.
And then the other thing, you know, going to East Shore Health, you know, we've got to, and Joe would know this better than me, but I deal with it all the time. You know, there's a letter out there floating around that East Shore Health, their first go-round at the Mill Pond was, no, don't hook up to the sewer, you can fix your system. So then, I think, then Kurt found out from the state that they're not involved anymore and they changed their mind. But if you're a good lawyer, you take the, you take the, wait a minute, these guys could build a system, they didn't like what it cost.
But just to clarify, engage on that, because they were saying if there's a sewer capacity issue, then they should do it on site. That, that, that was the gist of it. And, and I disagreed, I said, the sewer capacity issue is something that comes before the WPCA. That's not their fine, I mean, they're, they're, the question that was asked at the store.
So they, they said it, Kurt though.
You know, can they make a repair, is, you know, is it feasible repair?
Right.
But they sort of weighed in on sewer capacity, which, that's your purview ultimately.
But now that you've looked at it, the sewer capacity is a question.
Well, it is, you know, that's your purview, what you, you know, need to be looking at and the, I try to find my insight.
Who made the decision, was it East Shore Health that, unless sewer failure or not being able to?
Yeah, East Shore would determine a sewer.
Help me with this. A homeowner would have no choice if he's buying a home and the bank would force him to hook up, correct?
If, if they're on shores. If they're in the area, yes.
But Mill Pond, it's optional whether it would cause them to repair their own septic or hook up. We don't know what it would cause them to repair their own septic.
Four hundred, hundred thousand dollars versus potentially fifty to hook up. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, I mean, that's ballpark, I mean, that's.
Okay, yeah, so ballpark, so it's to, to fix their system.
So I wonder, when, when Kurt comes back to us, could you look at like them doing a, an addition and everybody else that's a commercial property tying in? And then looking at the rate that everyone else is tying in, say, you know what, guys, we could let everybody tie in and it's fifty years before we're full.
You're right.
You know, because I think for me to make the decision, I think if it's fifty years, I'd be like, ah, somebody else can deal with it in fifty years. And really, all it would be, would be putting a bigger pipe in a section going up, partway up seventeen?
Or.
Well, it, 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 no, it goes the whole way.
That's why I'm asking you, Kurt, to come back to us.
It goes the whole way, I mean, it's a pump station and, and the line down to, into North Haven has a limiting. I didn't analyze this, but I, I do recall the engineers looked at that and we relayed some pipes to provide the capacity. But there's not a whole lot more there. I mean, I, I think pretty, you know, pretty much the number is a number. You know, there's a little, there's always a little wiggle room, uh, but it's not a whole lot.
Or fifty years, hypothetically speaking, people, you know, don't move for another fifty years, right? And then the bank says you have to hook up, but then fifty years down the road, we are at actual capacity and they can't do it. Well, then they can't do it, right? I mean.
Well, not if they've paid the twelve-three. If they went by and paid the twelve-three, they're looking up whether there's capacity.
Then it becomes our problem and we're trying to prevent all that, you know, we don't like that problem. That, that's absolutely the, the whole intent behind it. The issue along Route seventeen is, you know, primarily, it's all residential. The vineyard and, and Mill Pond Tavern are the unusual things, they're, they're, they're in a residential zone, but they're a commercial use.
I can't find that letter you got from East Shore.
It's right here, I have it. It's from our June sixth meeting.
Is it June sixth, is that?
It says here, soil testing was conducted in two thousand fifteen by. It says here, soil testing was conducted in two thousand fifteen by a local engineering firm, and it was determined that a septic repair is possible. However, upon further review and assurance that sufficient capacity exists in the DEP-restricted sewer line to allow an additional up to thirty-eight, hundred forty gallons per day, we find it more feasible to allow connecting to sewers than constructing a septic repair. It is our understanding that final approval to allow sewer connection lies with the WPCA.
That's not a tortured use of phrase, nothing is. It's more feasible. The ordinance provides for feasibility determination. Now it's more feasible after he just said it's repairable on-site.
So Kurt, was that information that you had given them before you really looked at it? Or do you still stand by the amount in that letter?
Yeah, 'cause they were originally looking at saying, make, you can't make a repair on-site, you know, back to what you said, nothing to do with feasibility, and reserve, you know, saying, well, the sewer doesn't have capacity. And my comment was sewer capacity will come back for WPCA. The question, same letter I've always given, is, is it, can you make a feasible repair on-site? How with soils? That's, we asked, and that's been consistent all the way through.
Yeah, I have it.
Well, I think it'd be great if we could come up with a way to let the properties tie in. But, who knows?
Yeah, again, I'm going back to the, you know, interpretation of the ordinance, which says existing structures, and then that definition, I have to talk to Pat about that, how that applies. I wasn't reading it, and again, it's my interpretation, you know, when you're adding on and not, you can't, I saw a new structure on the same property as being an issue by my reading of the ordinance, probably wrong.
So that's the first thing, we need Pat to rule on that.
Yeah, I mean, that one. And again, what's, and I'm looking at Rosy Bianco Orchards, I'm trying to look at the whole picture. What's the impact on that? What's, that interpretation, what would be allowable, what wouldn't be? If there's an existing home on that property, yeah, but if you can't make a feasible repair, absolutely. It's all the other things, the new systems, you're putting in the whole new building on that property. I interpret it as, as not allowed.
Well, the house that's up there at the vineyard that he refurbished, is that hooked up or not?
No, no.
That's on septic.
I think they were able to, I don't know how much repair they had to make on that. But, I mean, that could always come forward. But again, the issue is, up in the big banquet facility up on that property, or big tasting room or whatever type of structure, that generates a whole lot more flows and it's a new structure. And how does that apply? Because again, there is a limited capacity and, you know, you don't wanna open the door to something that we don't have the capacity for. But again, I, we do have an ordinance and it's clarification or interpretation of it.
Well, why don't we get that clarification, the ordinance?
Okay, I will check with the Health District regarding area two and see what the past twenty-five years have brought in terms of the need for repairs. The one thing too is, technology being with, you know, systems, there's a lot more you can do with a, with a septic system and engineered system to get into work than in the old days, it was just a pipe with, with stone around it. Because systems are, they're expensive, but they're, they can do a whole lot more. So, I don't know. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Under Water Pollution Control Authority, move into the new business. Nothing listed. Citizen statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of coonies, boards and commissioners. Economic Development Commission?
EDC met last evening. Dennis Purnone was a guest. He is the one charged with maintaining and updating our town website. The commission did discuss what options there were for our website to increase its usability, information and visual appeal, I guess you could say. The gas station at the corner of Route eighty and twenty-two was a Gulf, now it's an Exxon. They have new signage, they're gonna be painting up the place and doing new curbing. System Malillo's building is almost complete and he will be looking to do a grand opening, I think, at some point. And the farm guide, which I have here, has been distributed throughout the region. I encourage people to look at it. It's a fantastic piece of information.
Next is Park Recreation Commission.
Next meeting is July twenty-fifth.
Thank you. Police Commission?
Police Commission does not meet in July.
Fire Commission, had lack of form, they had a special commission meeting on fire hose and they approved purchasing fire hose. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
We met prior to tonight's council meeting. Some of the items that were discussed, one is the lighting repairs at the auditorium. This has been an ongoing issue since last year. We all received the report from Bert, the fire marshal. They've been on top of it, have been working with the school district in regards to that. They have someone coming Thursday of this week and hopefully that will be the fix to the system. So far, they've spent approximately twenty thousand dollars on repairs and they've spent somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars on fire watch, because they are on fire watch. But they've also taken in forty-four thousand in revenue in the last two months. So they're paying for those expenses out of the revenue from the auditorium. The high school boiler upgrade was another topic we talked about. They rejected the first round of bids. They are now working with a, with general drafting and design for a design build. They are gonna put it out to bid once they have the exact design done on the system. We talked about the scoreboard at Memorial Field. Tom Cowell, the building official, is just waiting for some reports from the company that installed the sign as far as for the cement footings and everything on that issue. That should be taken care of within the next few weeks. And one other item that we talked about was the Stanley T. Williams, the underground storage tank. It failed its last inspection, so it needs to be taken out by December of two thousand nineteen. Fran Marola reported that he has a smaller oil tank from the town hall that they took out when we converted to gas here, that he's had stored at Public Works. And they are gonna be putting that tank in up at Stanley T. Williams. It's gonna be an outs, it's not gonna be an underground tank, it's gonna be above ground, stored on a pad enclosed in cement. They do have to remove the other tank that's underground and do soil testing. So Franny will be getting costs together for us and coming back at a future date as to the cost of that, because we will have to pay for that. And there was also discussion that the Board of Ed would split the cost with us because we joined, we shared the building on there. So we just have to wait for Franny to come back with cost. They're gonna install the tank that's up there. The biggest cost is the crane to pick up the tank and move it up there and then also taking the tank out of the ground and doing the soil testing and things like that. So those were the bulk of the items that we talked about.
Thank you. Town planning goals, Subcommittee?
No meeting, no meeting.
Public Safety Communications?
No meeting.
Plan and zoning commission?
Next meeting will be on the thirteenth and they're beginning to go forward with plans on pursuing the plan of conservation to develop.
East Shore Health District Department? Park Recreation Commission, did they say anything about the pavement at the, or the basketball courts?
It's on the agenda.
It's further down. We discussed it earlier in the meeting.
Next is Town Manager's Report.
Yes, I have a.
NBIS roof project update?
Yes, we're moving along, making progress. In fact, Jonathan Friedman from Horizon Engineering Associates, who was on-site this morning, spent the day or most of the day going through the mechanicals. I spoke with him at the end of the day before he left. He'll have a report hopefully by the end of the week to match up with what he currently, what he sees. But he did give me some examples in terms of, you know, not a whole lot. Things look good, they've made progress, they've repaired much of the mechanicals where they had previous reports. But he did find some additional things that weren't coming up on the program. For instance, the library unit has, I believe, four condensers and, or compressors. And only two will work, even though the unit and the software and the computer says that it's active and running. When he's out there physically to locate and look at it, only two out of the four are running. And he found that in two different locations. So he's gonna, you know, prepare a comprehensive list, we'll have that hopefully by the end of the week. I'll sit down with Bill Chody and then it's Bill's job to implement that and make sure the energy wheels, all of the belts and compressors and everything up there is functioning properly for the system. The envelope, not gonna, is still holding strong. There is, after all these different rainstorms and so forth, there haven't been any leakages or, you know, anything like that that we've seen. He hasn't reported anything, so that's good, so far so good. We are monitoring the humidity and condensation issues that occurred in the band and chorus room. So far, those have been minimal. I think he's had one occasion when there's been, you know, a couple of drops, a couple of drips. So he's gonna investigate in terms of trying to determine the insulation or the amount of insulation within those duct work, in the duct work. So we're monitoring that and we should have a pretty good handle on it once the report comes back. And then absolutely, there'll be obviously a bill coming back after all those repairs are done. But hopefully, it'll be done July, August, in time for the school and hopefully we can mitigate any problems with the condensation issues. But interestingly enough, one of the things is going to be an internal policy and talking with the staff, some of you remember on the tour, the chorus room is right adjacent to the big double doors where the maintenance crew has a, I just say, I wanna say a shop, but an area that also leads to the kitchen, but there's an outer door. And, you know, if you leave that outer door propped open with, you know, today's conditions, it's a, it's a short journey to the chorus room. And if you leave in the chorus room open, you're gonna create these potential condensation issues, you know, in terms of, because it's sort of a negative, it just, it's, you put a piece of paper there, it's sucking air in.
Trusting, changing.
Yeah, on just a little crack like that. So I think some of this, you know, cumulative effort in terms of practices and policies, maintenance issues, the whole system is going to be back on track and working, that's my hope. You know, and fine tuning. And again, the band in which you set within the room makes a difference in that you can't be monkeying with the, or adjusting and putting the band, you know, sixty-eight to seventy-two should be the, I guess, the optimal normal band. You can't be downsetting at sixty-five trying to get to seventy-two and, you know. So there has to be some internal controls about who has access, who has control and who's setting that to optimize the system within the, within the building. So we're making progress. So I'll have more to report, hopefully the August meeting.
Town Line Entry Sign?
Yeah, just some additional information there. We're still researching, trying to get the numbers. Kerry's doing a great job in terms of trying, getting out there, there's a lot of photos in there to look at, you know, getting the right sign, the right price that's gonna hold up in the elements. And I'm not sure what that is, but it may be the sign that's sitting right out here in front of you. You know, but probably, you know, more expensive end than versus the, you know, the plywood and vinyl and/or aluminum. But Fran hasn't yet had a chance to get a price on a particular one like that. Obviously, we're not gonna go gold leaf, we're not gonna do something like that. But I think something very simple and straightforward like that sign can be replicated and we'll get a good price and we'll figure out what it is and bring a backup proposal in August, hopefully.
How did North Haven come up with the idea to commercialize their sign, advertisement?
I don't, I don't know, I'd have to check.
They went to various businesses, just, you know, sought different businesses to sponsor the signs.
North Haven does it too.
Maybe we should give that a.
Because if you look at the, they have a sponsor on the bottom of the sign.
They generally have a garden at those signs too, that the business maintains.
I think the garden, I think, I don't know if it was the garden club, I can't remember if it was the garden club.
There's some at the garden club.
So if they sponsor, do you know, if they sponsor the signs, do they maintain, they, are they?
I don't recall that properly, I do know that they're all, all those signs have sponsors. And I think it was the garden club that then put the garden to them.
Can you just find out some information as far as exactly what the sponsorship, like, how much they charged and what does it actually pay for? Do they pay for the initial part of the sign and the town keeps up the sign?
It's yearly, monthly.
Just to get some information, because that, that might be.
It'll be interesting to know, but my guess is part of the town has to maintain.
Kind of like turning the town into AT&T Park or.
Right, Dunkin' Donuts Stadium.
But I tell you what, those signs look nice though.
And just the two renditions of the North Ramford sign. I noticed the one for Northford has the town emblem on it and the one for North Ramford does not. Is that just to show us what it looks like with it on? Because I thought we kind of decided we didn't want the town.
Yeah, because I kind of thought that we were gonna go without it. But it, you know, it's in there, just to show you.
We decided not to go with it.
Right, okay.
All right, Freedom of Information, Chris?
Yeah, just a heads up, I, you know, just to put that in there. You know, kind of unusual, have one or two. I don't think I've been here for four years and had many, but to have a ten come in is kind of unusual. So I'll be, you know, responsive, it's part of the law. We have a record, we give it. And just wanted you to have a heads up on that in case any of the members wanted to know what that was all about. I have copies of all the records that were sought, so it was just more of a heads up, that's all.
Okay, moving on. Next item is community events and presentations. Have none listed. Next item, citizen statements, petitions and correspondence.
Victor Peter Andrea, live on Beach Street. I'm the one who's giving the FOIs and the FOAM to substantiate some of the evidence that I actually went through on an incident that happened on April fifth. I just left, which was, I found very interesting. A communications subcommittee meeting, okay? Counselor Fawnin, Diamond, Arment, Candelora and Rose Angeloni were attending. And it was the Hending scoreboard sign. And the superintendent stated very clearly that he had three quotes and it was approved by the state. And it's a sign that was approved on the thirteen PSX zero-three-four-one state-approved vendor list. I did some research due to the incident that was going on because we had a forensic analysis video guy and a forensic accountant that we had hired. And during the findings, we found the sign going up. No permits were taken. We called Jill Bison from the state. Hending isn't approved vendor to purchase a sign, but the sign that they purchased was an Everson Model nine-three-seven-six. No bids went out, he was sole sourced seventeen thousand five hundred dollars and it is not approved by the state of Connecticut. Here's copies that I tried to get in record. So for answer, Joe, the reason why I was trying to put it in evidence before is because he was lying to you. Here's one. That's a copy for the town council. Second FOI led me to another issue. Ambulance forty-four was supposed to be on-site on April fifth. Ambulance forty-four was supposed to be on site on April 5th, where my son had an incident. So we wanted all the records and all the stuff from ambulance forty-four, because during the video analysis, we couldn't see any ambulance or any responses. During that, we found out that fire watch, well, firemen were being watched. I mean, firemen were watching the auditorium on Board of Education payroll. So we FOied that information. Come to find out, during that analysis, I found several records on a two thousand and fifteen, which is under warranty, totaling more than twenty-two thousand dollars in repairs on the ambulance forty-four, which was out of repair, so obviously couldn't have been there. And all signed by Anthony Esposito. The checks led to another FOI. That FOI is a ruling. But before I got to that ruling, I FOied, so the town council understands, phone records. Personal phone records, because Chief Stewart called me and my wife screaming at us. So I got the phone log, and I have the files. During that investigation, we found out that he made a hundred and twelve personal calls, three hundred and forty-eight town calls. We FOied those records, which we got. It's a personal cellphone paid by the town. So we pay personally for the Chief Stewart's phone, signed by Anthony Esposito. I asked him. He thought it was funny. I FOied the ruling Jasmine made in two thousand and three. Anybody that's a financial director in this town cannot operate as a fire chief, deputy fire chief, or on the Board of Finance for the Fire Department. While the chief's away right now, Stewart's away, he's the acting fire chief. Here's the ruling. He can't, it's a, according to that, according to the statute, it says, conflicted interest ruling. He can't, I think it was addressed to him in two thousand and three. Phone records that are paid by the town for Stewart's personal calls. So any other, I still have some more. These are all the FOIs. They're not arrests. They're just substantiating all the stuff that I'm stumbling upon. I got bills here for a warranty truck of two thousand and fifteen for twenty-two thousand dollars. This is ambulance forty-four. Four thousand, three thousand, twenty-one hundred, eighteen hundred dollars. We're paying for something for repairs that's under warranty, signed by him, signed by the fire commissioners, paid by taxpayers. Then I find out information in reference to company one where ambulance forty-four came to. It's under construction. I FOied it. Come to find out, on June 30th, I FOied it. Asked what construction, where the money came from. I was told by the town manager himself that there is no paperwork will be given to me on any financial records of the Fire Department. So we sent the complaint into the FOI commission. I had FOied records of all financial records from the Fire Department, and they were denied by him, town manager. So here's no permit application, and on July 5th, they went to go take out a permit for fifty thousand dollars for repairs that are ongoing, with no electrical, no HVAC, and no drums at the town, after my FOI. And no money allocated, which is fifty thousand. Now we're gonna get to the hose. I FOied the hose. I was at a meeting. He stated very clearly, here's his original draft given by the town manager. I asked the town manager to keep you guys in the loop, but obviously, he denied my information. I told him he works for the town council at the pleasure of. My original quote, my original FOI was for thirty-one thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars. They gave it to me from Chief Stewart for a total of eighty-six hundred feet of hose. But in the town meeting, which is in here, he asked for three thousand feet of hose. In a meeting that took place, one of the commissioner, fire commissioner said, dressed, let's knock it down to fifteen thousand, get the trucks up and running, which were already up to running. We got three miles of hose. Anthony said, we already have the money. Let's just spend it. That's a conflict of interest. Here's all the findings. There's six, seven different FOIs pertaining to this. The numbers go from eighty-six hundred, three thousand, fifty-two hundred, all taxpayers' money, unappropriated funds. Town council was sold on something without any backup, because the bids came in on six-twenty-two, and on six-twenty was your town council meeting. This is three FOIs. Here's all my FOIs I personally signed, just in case you want to see them. And then a lady in the office, which I don't know her name, while I was getting my FOI spent. Three days, she was complaining about changing the chief's license plate at our expense, so we could say something like chief on it. Here's that FOI. These are the substantiated case that is ongoing. We have a forensic accountant and a video analysis team. I FOied a bunch of records. I've been denied them. There's also statements that were made for people in town, for fire brush. Somebody might own a farm or want to open up a vineyard at a state level. Got shut down, held up that process for one person, could be in this room or not for ninety days. Have that in writing. Thank you.
Any more citizen statements, petitions, correspondence?
Hey, everybody. I'm Lynn Reardon. I live at thirty-three Droul Farm Road. I am here because I am concerned about dispatch. So I just have a few questions, and I don't know if you want to answer them, or if I'm just supposed to speak. So you tell me what I'm supposed to do. But my curiosity is, if we decide to consolidate dispatch with Bramford, does it require an ordinance change?
No.
What ordinance?
I don't really know if I'm being totally honest, but I, I've been asked to ask that question.
You've been asked to ask that question?
Yes. So I'm gonna move on to the next. If you don't have the answer, if the answer's no, we're gonna move on from there. If, if you need an ordinance change.
What is motivating your question? I mean, I know we've looked at this. We had a public hearing, but it was a lot of backlash.
Right. Well, it's my understanding that it's back on the agenda this evening.
It's an item under unfinished business, yes.
Right. So that's why I'm here. And I'm assuming this is the only time that I can get up and speak and ask any questions, so that's what I'm doing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
An ordinance change regarding dispatch?
Right.
You have dispatch somewhere on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. It's been said in the past that the reason, the idea of consolidating dispatch that came up was for safety reasons. That's one thing that Bill Seward has said over and over and over again. And I do agree with Bill that we do need two dispatchers on in town. I totally agree with that one hundred percent. But if this is such, it's been such a hot item, and safety is an issue, where, where has this subject gone? Like, it fell off the radar. It like disappeared. And now, all of a sudden, I'm assuming it's coming back, since it's on the agenda. So I want to know that if, if it's a safety issue, where did it go? And if people are concerned with safety, why is there still only one dispatcher on in town? Why not hire a per diem person in the interim while we work out this decision, whether to consolidate with Bramford or not? My gut tells me no, but that's just me. But I'm waiting to hear, like, something that I must be missing. So if safety is an issue, you haven't put anybody else on. So is safety the main, I guess my question is, is safety the main reason to consider consolidating dispatch?
That is one of the aspects that we're looking at, yes.
But then why not have, why not have a dispatcher on? If you're concerned about the citizens that live in this town, why not? And if one dispatcher, you're saying, cannot handle the load, we've heard from Billy Seward, we've heard, I've heard from some people up here, major concerns. But yet, town council has done nothing to change the staffing. I'm confused as to why. I work in a medical field. Fire departments need so many people on. They can't operate without it. If somebody calls out, they fill it in. You know, I can't work with, with just myself. I need more staff. So if you're concerned about that, why have there not been per diem people employed? You might not have an answer to that right now, but that is a concern of mine, because that makes me question, because that's what I'm just trying to figure this whole thing out. That makes me question whether safety isn't true, is truly the reason, one of the main reasons behind this. 'Cause if it is, you would have done something about it. That's just my opinion.
We looked at this several months ago. Safety was certainly a consideration. Cost was also a consideration.
Mm-hmm.
The premise in your question or presentation seems to be that it's a given that safety is the overriding issue. What I'd agree with is there are people that have questioned whether or not it is adequate to have one dispatcher on duty at any given time. But I don't think we, as a council, ever reached a conclusion that we were accepting that opinion, but that was, in fact, the final determination.
Okay, fair enough.
Your premise is, we have to have two dispatchers in order to have a safe dispatch center. I don't think we ever reached that conclusion.
That's fair enough. That's not my position, because I don't fully understand the, I mean, I hear all their jobs. I do feel like it's a lot. I do think safety and numbers is always best. If someone's busy going to the bathroom, having lunch, doing whatever, a second person would be fantastic. But if you're saying that you people have all not agreed that that is true and valid, that you're still working on that, then that's why you have not added more per diem, a per diem person. Because you're not, if you're not sure yet whether safety is really the issue or not.
But it's one of the issues. It is one of the-
So it is an issue.
It's not like, it's not like we're deciding that it is or it's not an issue. It is one of the many issues involved around us making a decision.
You know, so I want to make a point of order here. This is citizen statement. We have this on the agenda. We're gonna discuss that then. This isn't citizens debate. Citizen statement.
So am I not allowed to ask questions?
Absolutely not, unless we took a break to allow you.
You can ask them, but we may not, you know.
We won't answer them now, but when we're discussing it, your questions will come out.
Okay.
So ask the questions. But we, it's not a debate, guys. It's citizen statements, but we're never gonna go home.
Well, all right, just to say, I wasn't, I was just trying to answer some of the-
Exactly, but if we do that for everybody that comes up there, this is citizen statement.
You guys spent fifty minutes talking about one subject matter here this evening. Excuse me, sir. Fifty minutes discussing one subject.
You're absolutely right.
So I, you know, this is a big concern, and this is a huge topic here in North Bramford, whether you want to agree with it or not, or whether anybody thinks it is or not. For me, as a citizen, it's a concern.
And what I'm saying, it's on the agenda.
That's fine. I will ask my questions, and I will walk away. And then I will have to pay very, very close attention.
No, stay here later on, when we're going on.
Lynn, Joe said it, it's safety and cost, and there's a lot of big-
Okay. Well, then, I guess, I really can't, I'm not even gonna bother to ask the questions, because I'll just wait and hear what you have to say later. But for the record, for what it means to anybody, I have, regardless of what anybody might think, I have spent a great deal of time researching and looking at this, and speaking to all parties involved, on all sides of the fence. And not that anybody really cares what I seem to think. But for the record, I think it's a really bad idea. I'm a hundred percent against it.
What is a bad idea?
To consolidate with Bramford. I do not want a dark police station here in North Bramford. I don't think it's in the best interest of anyone here. I don't believe safety is really the main reason behind all of this hubbub. And I think there's plenty of other ways to save money. I'd rather pay somebody to take my garbage to the dump, cut back that way, than risk safety of our citizens and the safety of our police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I just want to say something also, though, in town council's defense, is that we spend a tremendous amount of time evaluating these subjects as well. And I can tell you that nobody up here is gonna make the decision that is gonna sacrifice the safety of any officer, any citizen in the town, or any firefighter, okay? No matter what we do, we're not gonna sacrifice the safety of anybody. So that's what's, I'm, you're asserting, you're, don't do that. This is not the truth, not the truth.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
That's not what I said. But I was asserting that. I was asserting that when you stood up front. Thank you.
Are you threatening her inside a public building? It wasn't a threat. It sounded like a pretty good threat.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
Tom Zampiano, Los Alamos Way. I just want to comment on the fire hose. And the only reason why I want to comment on it is, I witnessed our town council meeting, and then I also went to the fire commission's meeting. And I was surprised that it was approved, that the dollars were approved without very much fact at all. Then I went to the fire commission meeting and watched the fire commission be presented with all the details and the facts, which was perfect. It went perfect. However, it went in the wrong order. That was supposed to happen first. And then the fire commission comes to the town council and says, here's our detail. This is what we need. And instead, it happened backwards. And I just wanted to make a comment on that. I mean, chiefs, the chief undoubtedly has, understands the regulations and so forth. But I think there probably would have been a different outcome if it was done properly, so. The other thing I want to comment on is signs. I'm not sure what, what's expected out of the sign, but the little green signs work. You pass through, I'm in North Bramford. So I'm not sure why we want to spend a lot of money on a welcome to the town in North Bramford. That's just my opinion, so. Because I don't think people move into the town because of the sign. I think they move into the town because of mill rates and services provided, so. It's just something to take in consideration.
Now, if we, if we've got sponsors like other towns, what's costing them?
That's, yeah, that's different, yeah. I'm, I'm just, I'm just making an opinion. I don't, I don't, I don't, not asking for a response. I'm just, I, I think, you know, like I said, the main thing I wanted to talk about was the fire hose. I, I thought that the chief did a wonderful job presenting it to the commission. But it shouldn't have came here first. And that was unfortunate. And it was nice to see some of the council members there to, to watch it, because it, it, that's how it's supposed to work. But not everybody was there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen statements? Seeing none, we'll move on to resignations and appointments. Resignation of Ken Ash from the Board of Fire Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duvie.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arment.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manah.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Next, we move into unfinished business, discussion in action. Approval of proposed ordinance twenty-seventeen dash one, chapter forty, entitled Fire Department.
Nothing yet, not ready.
What are we waiting on?
Next item is fif-
I don't remember what the ordinance was.
It's the fire marshal fees and the lockbox.
I'm choking.
Oh, okay.
Next item is fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road, with culinary park concept and cost estimates.
Yeah, I, I put a brief memo in the packet for your consideration, look at, apparently, the rec commission met. And I know Mark can speak to that. I wasn't at the meeting, and I don't have the minutes. But the communication back was that it would be more appropriate for the Economic Development Commission. I guess they don't want to look at creating recreational space at this time. I bet is that accurate?
That's correct. So they tabled it.
Thank you. RFP slash Q for fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road.
I would like to move that we table that until our next meeting, so we really can clarify the language of what it would, the RFQ would say. And we have satisfied all of our questions regarding the RFQ. And we have satisfied all of our questions regarding the RFQ. So if we could have it on the next agenda.
We had a discussion on this earlier and said we were going to offer this up as a public hearing on, on this matter. Is that, is that no longer contemplated?
As to whether we send out the RFP or not?
Well, I, I see no reason to send out an RFP if the public hasn't had a, an opportunity to weigh in on this once again.
Are they going to weigh in on the, on sending out an RFP or RFQ? Are they going to weigh in on that or what to do with the property? Because I thought we had discussed it and I, my thoughts were that, you know, we getting responses from these RFP would be a part of the discussion, right? And, and having a discussion without those facts is not the full discussion.
That's what we've talked about several times as to which comes first.
Well, okay.
And my recollection, which I offer, is that I thought we were going for a public hearing before we went up for any kind of RFP.
But isn't, okay, so just a matter of discussion, isn't, isn't waiting for responses from an RFP then a part of the discussion that you offer to the public? I mean, without that, we don't know who may respond, if anybody, or how many people, or what their proposals may be. And shouldn't that be a part of the discussion that we have with the public? That's why I would suppose we would have it on the next agenda with language, send out the RFP slash RFQ and see what kind of responses we get. And then that becomes part of the evaluation.
I agree with George. I thought we'd gone over this several times. At least half the people, maybe three quarters you talked to that were at the charrette, had told me that it, what the Economic Development Commission and what you were stating is not true. That the room, the flavor of the room was to keep it open space. And so, so I agree with George, you know.
Is, what, what am I saying?
Why have, why have this thing, why send it out looking for proposals if the townspeople are going to come out and say, we don't want to sell it?
Well, maybe we ought to, maybe the people have a right to say that, which is fine. And I didn't assert one way or another anything, I might add. But having the responses and knowing what the proposals are is a part of the discussion, is what I'm saying. You can't have an honest discussion if you don't know what the proposals-
If you don't want to see it developed, you don't want to see it developed. You don't need to know what's coming in there. You don't need to know which-
Then that's half the discussion.
You don't need to know which pharmacy is going to want to come in there.
You don't know if it's going to be a pharmacy. You don't know what it could be. I mean, I know you think you know, but you don't know until we have response.
I, I understand-
Yeah, I didn't know anything about center plan either.
Right.
I understand that, but we, we asked
So let's guess.
for information.
We did that, of course.
And, and it was brought to us after what I thought was a well-considered inquiry into property values and developmental possibilities. And it came back as the best possible use was, was a pharmacy, which is-
Who said that?
Our assessor.
Our assessor.
Oh, yeah.
That, that was in, that it was in his report. So-
He said that that was the best possible use for this property?
Yes.
Yes, he did. That was, that's, that's why Al's talking about that. And whether it's true, prior to my coming on the council, I understood that that was essential to the plan that was being proposed by the previous-
A pharmacy?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No.
Yeah, I don't know that that is-
That was not part of the Yale study, no.
No, not part of the Yale study. Part of the center plan, by the way. So, all, all I'm asking is which, which is to come first? Because I thought we had, we're treading, you know, ground that we've covered before, where we said we were having the public hearing first, prior to going out.
I understand, I agree that we have to have a public hearing regarding this, but part of the public, part of the information that we need to present to the public is, would be what responses we get from, that's all I'm going to say. Is we don't know until we ask for responses from developers. What they request. And you can, you know-
But listen, it has, if you're going to have a public hearing, you got to be clear on the question.
Right.
You got to be clear on, on the outcome. Do you want this to stay as open space? Do you want this to be developed? Those, those are the questions that the public has to understand so they could come to the public hearing and voice their opinion. We can't just have a public hearing to have a public hearing. We have to have an idea.
Well, nobody's ever discussed, you know, formulating the questions that you wanted to ask. We were talking about-
Couldn't a compromise be to have the information that was presented to us by the town assessor? That could be part of the public hearing, rather than having to go out and get a, a real estate agent to give us a price? Why couldn't we use his report?
Did you get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, we all did.
We don't have. So why couldn't that be available?
It could.
And that would take care of that.
It already is. It's a public, it's a part of the plan.
Right.
Well, okay, but I mean, have copies available as part of it? Public hearing.
So-
That's an estimate of what we can get and the revenue that-
That's not, that's, that's, we may get no desire from anybody to put a pharmacy there. So, we could get something that's not desirable or desirable, worth a million dollars plus tax revenue or worth nothing.
Maybe get a Cumberland pharmacy.
Huh? Say what?
May get a Cumberland pharmacy.
Well, you may, we don't know. But we don't know, and that's my problem, is we don't know. And we can't bring a, I don't know to the public.
All right, so it's up to the council to decide whether they want to schedule a public hearing or they want to do an RFQ. So if we could get a consensus from everybody as to what they want to do, we have a direction to move.
Well, okay, I would, I would like to see us develop a clear language for an RFP, RFQ for proposals as to what to do with 1599.
How about we go, George, what's-
Well, I don't understand an RFP, RFQ for what we want to do with it. They're going to want to develop it. And the question-
Right.
The question that I thought was fundamental to the citizens is whether or not they wanted to develop it or they wanted it to be
Okay.
remain, remain as open space. I thought that was the question.
So that's not my question.
I understand that.
George, you're here for a public hearing. On a question.
Y- yes.
Chris.
Yeah.
Public hearing?
Yes.
You're for an RFP, RFQ?
That's my thing.
Marie?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
So it's public hearing first.
Very, very-
Why don't I do this and, and work on bringing this back on the agenda for August to formulate the question? I would suggest that your, your public hearing not happen anytime before September, given the fact that summer's scheduled.
Right.
Right? And try to give time to schedule something with the auditorium at the school because you're going to need a large audience. And in August, September, you can formulate the, the question.
Can we include the assessor's information?
Include whatever you want. I'm, I'm just saying, I think as a starting point, you start to begin, have a debate on the question.
We just want the notification to go out to the, to the newspapers that this is, you know, the question on the council's mind. Do you want it to remain open space versus do you want it to be developed? You know, and we have the backup from the, you know.
Right, yeah, so I, we can make that happen.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to dispatch center.
Okay, so I am the one that requested to put dispatch center.
Oh, you caused it.
I caused the problems, yes. And it should have been listed under unfinished business from back in March when we had our hearing with the state, when we had the hearing over at the MBIS cafeteria. It should have just been continued under unfinished business going along because at that point in time, we had decided that whatever we were going to do, before we did it, we would have a public session where the public could come up and give us their viewpoints. So I'm the one that asked to put this on here so that, because I have been approached by a number of residents saying, when is the public hearing or the public meeting going to be held in regards to the, the dispatch center? So, so that we can discuss it, I am going to put a motion on the floor so that we can have the discussion. So my motion is that we leave dispatch center the way it is right now and we do not move it to Branford, and that is my motion.
I'll second that.
So now we can discuss it.
So under discussion-
I misunderstand. Did you just say you, you wanted to have another public hearing? Or you just want to vote on whether or not you want to consider moving the dispatch center?
She wants it to remain the same.
My, my motion is that the dispatch center remain the same.
And there will be no further public hearing on the issue?
Well, there's no reason to get public input if we decide, if we vote. If the vote goes, that it stays-
I just want to be clear on what it was you were proposing.
As is. And part of, the basis is, is that after I sat through the hearing on March 23rd and listened to the fire commis, the fire chief, the police commission, the person from the state, and got all of that information, what I personally drew from it is that we don't have a problem with our dispatch center. And that they offer, they answer the calls within the ten seconds. They don't, they, the state has not had any problems with our dispatch, have heard any problems about our dispatch. Comments that I heard from the police commission is that this would, this issue of going to the wrong address or what gets perceived happens in other towns. And the quote that came out is, the only difference is, North Branford talks about it publicly. The other towns that it happens in, it just happens. And I have talked to a number of police departments and big and small towns, and it does happen. It's not unique to North Branford.
It's human error.
Right.
That's what it is.
Right. So, that, that's why I put it back on so that we can, you know, I put the motion on the floor now. Anyone else wants to discuss?
Well, I would, I would just like to say that, you know, I, I would not, not want to close the door on the possibility in the future perhaps having two dispatchers on duty or at least adding a two-two-one or something because I think there are people that feel, and we have heard from people feel, that there are times when it's been difficult to have one dispatcher. So I, I hate to just close the door completely on the, on the possibility of having two at some point. I know that, you know, right now budget is difficult and we didn't do that this year, but I'd hate to say that's it forever.
I, I-
Oh, you're not saying it's it.
It's not forever.
It's not inherent in your motion.
No, no, it's just that at this point in time, dispatch stays as is. We have not, we don't have any money allocated for the 2017-18 budget to add another dispatcher, pay per diem, you know, the whole issue of paying per diem. We'd have to look at the contract to see if that's even allowed that, because it's, that would be like creating a new position. And can you just pay someone per diem while you decide that if you're going to add someone or some, I don't know that answer. And so that would be a contract thing. So, my motion is just for, right now, for 2017-18, there is nothing in the budget, there is no money allocated to do anything in regards to it, and-
You want to vote just to keep things as is?
Yeah.
But you didn't say really 2017-18.
No, I don't think you need to vote to keep things as is.
Yeah, I don't know why.
But what you want to do is-
I don't, I don't even know what the liability is voting like that because there were problems that were identified and are we just going to say, we're just going to go with the flow? Even though we had problems that were identified?
Well, I, I, I'm going to support the motion, Mike. Because at the public hearing-
I would be careful about voting for that. And I would ask the town attorney's opinion on the liability of that.
Came down here and we were told he was the guy that monitors this, you know, dispatch centers across the state. And he stood in the room and he said, there are lots of communities that have one dispatcher on board. And he also told us that he wasn't aware of any issues with North Branford's dispatch. And for me, especially economically, I mean, absolutely, you know what? Two or three of them would be great. But where the guy that monitors it for the state is come down here and told us, you guys have no problem. I'm not going to fix something that's not broke. And, and believe me, we, you know, they, they do a great job. And, you know, and I know that firsthand like a lot of us do, so.
All right, so I, I will amend my motion to read to say that my motion is that we do not move the dispatch center to Branford in the 2017-18 fiscal year.
That's fine. And I'll second that.
So we're not-
I'll change the stuff.
So we're not closing the door to say that we will never look at it. I'm just saying that we're not going to move the dispatch center to Branford in this fiscal year.
In this fiscal year.
17-18. We're in the fiscal year 17-18.
So really, the purp, the purpose of your motion is to remove discussion of the dispatch center as an unfinished business agenda item. And it will resurface when and if it needs to resurface.
Right, and, and-
It could come up during next budget season.
It could come up later this year.
It could come in this budget season.
It could come up this year to add another dispatcher for next year or to-
Well, that would be administrative, as opposed to, uh-
It, it could.
Structurally, if you will, yeah.
Okay.
I, I view Rose's motion as one of, to bring finality to the question.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
A number of people approached her and said, is there going to be a hearing? Well, I haven't heard, heard anything. And I think they're correct to criticize us in that we had a hearing with the state of Connecticut. We listened to the fire chief and the police chief. Fire chiefs seemed to come full circle on the issue. But we did not take any specific action at the conclusion of that hearing. And it's probably appropriate to do so, so that concept of finality is out there and people know what is and is not going to happen. So I'm supporting Rose's motion.
Um, I just have to say that part, part of that was also that we're kind of waiting on Hartford to develop a budget, for heaven's sakes. And, you know, and that is one ask, that's like why a lot of these open questions haven't, we haven't been able to decide on them because part of it is financial, right?
Well, well, I, I-
This one is.
Well-
I thought it was public safety.
Well, no, because we, we don't have money for it in our current budget, never mind for it further. So, in, in that respect, it's not.
Isn't there money from the state to consult with?
Well, there is, well, well, that's for capital. It's for capital things. And, and so that, you know.
And that could go away.
It, it could go, who knows? They don't have a budget established. I know they take it out of the 911 fund and the money's there and whatever.
They even said that was disapparent because of cell phones.
So-
They can't touch that.
So, so that is my motion.
You're limiting discussion for this fiscal year.
I'm not closing, I, I'm not saying that it can't come back up again or whatever, but I think we need-
Just for the time being.
I think we need to put it to bed and, 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 you know, we said, you know, after budget season, and we developed our budget, it went to referendum. The money that was set aside in contingency for any possible move, whatever it may be, whether it stayed here or moved, got disappeared during our budget deliberations and is gone. So there is nothing in contingency to move it either way. So I think we should just put it to rest for this fiscal year. And that's why I put it on the agenda and made the motion.
I believe I'll second it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fwanan.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arment.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manah.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is purchase of fire hose.
Yeah, I asked this to be put back on the agenda because at our last meeting, I was very troubled by the whole process, the way it unfolded. You know, just coming out of a budget that we had. And, you know, some of the questions that I asked, you know, Michael, I asked you about the allocation of $70,000, okay? Which is a lot of money. We're talking about dispatch right now. That could be a salary for a dispatcher. And basically, from what I was told and the council was told, it had to be done because July, the budget season was ending. We did not get information. I didn't get, or maybe I missed it, but I didn't- Um, we did not get information, I didn't get, or maybe I missed it, but I didn't get the email, we didn't have the test reports, nothing. But yet, everyone up here seems so inclined on voting so quickly on spending that kind of money, and that's not the way. We're supposed to be the fiscal authority for this town. And you look at the charter, the manager's duties, responsibilities, it's to provide us the information, you know, just to say, well, so-and-so told me, that's not good enough for me. I mean, I think we have more of due diligence and to do and find out exactly. I attended that meeting, uh, and I believe the fire commissioners heard that for the first time that night about the hose. Um, you know, and then, just from asking a question, it went from 70,000 down to 30, whatever, 1,192 dollars. Um, you know, again, I, I don't understand that, and, that we do have a charter, and there is a process for purchasing, and that should be followed. I think communication's important, um, and we need to follow a process. We can't just, I don't think, do things like that and just arbitrarily vote. Um, you know, do we need hose, don't we need hose? You know, there's a lot of questions out there. I mean, you watch that on TV, it's embarrassing.
Well, you know, I can respond, I mean, obviously, there are a couple of different things that happened this, this particular meeting, for the June meeting, uh, in terms of timing, and that starts with the chief and the department, uh, and when they test for the hose. And what this council knows is, what changed this year is the testing company, and the testing company this year isn't going to test anything prior to 87, like they had in the past, and passed it. And so, you know, I'm not going to second guess the chief on NFPA standards and how to run the company, or the fire department, and if he's talking to me about a li-, potential liability, uh, I use the same analogy, I would say, if Fran came to us and said, "Listen, I, it's mid-February, or early February, and I've got enough salt for one more storm, and, and, you know, I need more, I need to buy 30,000 worth of, of, of salt to melt the ice," I'm not going to say no, or tell Fran, "Hey, split, double it, or, or thin it out and, and do the best you can." So, I rely on the chief to give me a number, I asked him, I'm preparing the agenda-
But it was stated that night, that he had sent an email, and we never got that email. If that was such an urgency, there was not time to contact his counsel and tell us that that-
Well, it was a placeholder, because I was putting the, the, together, the agenda, because our last meeting, and the last meeting is, is June 20th, and the end of the fiscal year, and he's presenting me with a liability issue that they've got to take all of this hose out. I said, "What, you know, what are you looking for, and to replace the hose, give me a factor." And he says, "You know, 70,000." So I said, "Okay, but work on it," and he didn't work on it, and he came to the meeting, was trying to get the quotes. It was a placeholder to get in, to bring to the council in this fiscal year, to try to address the issue on contingency in this fiscal year, because there's nothing in next fiscal year. And so for me, in my perspective, I look at it as, the chief comes to me with, with a major issue.
So basically, every single department should have came in and said, "Oh my God, I'm going to be out of salt, oh my God, I'm going to need," and then-
Now, that, that wasn't, I talked to the fire chief, that wasn't, that wasn't the case. The case was, a lot of that hose was prior to 19, what, 87?
Yeah.
Prior to 1987. He didn't realize that hose was expired, and the hose company wasn't going to test it. There was some hose that failed, but the majority of it was older hose, and even on the brush trucks.
Yes, 700.
That hose, they wouldn't even test that hose.
700, 500 feet.
So that, that was, that was the whole gist of it, and it happened so late in the budget season, and towards the end of the budget year, that, that's why it was a whole calamity of, of things that occurred, that brought that about. And, um, you know, the, the fire chief was, was very sorry that he had it presented that way, and it had to come about that way. But it was, is just something that occurred, and I don't see how anybody can take the blame for that.
I'm not trying to blame anyone, I'm saying, there is a policy and procedure, read the charter.
We, we know that, but there's emerg-, yeah, there's emergency situations, yeah.
Everything's an emergency. No, that's not the way it's-
So my, my question is, and I wasn't here for that, but hearing this, um, my question is, and maybe Anthony knows, so you switched testing, hose testing people this year?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm sure, in the NFPA, that the hose guy that you had last year that went further back, has the same certification that the guy that you had this year does. So how can that be? How can one guy say, "87 is no good," but same certi-, certification, same, you know, he, this guy is the NFPA hose tester, and he goes further back? So, so did we spend that money on a personal opinion, rather than fact?
The, the prior company, when the chief pulled out the bill from the prior company, their language was, "We tech, test all hose unless told otherwise." So again, to go back to Mike's comment, the date of the hose was not, was not known.
So they test the hose?
They test the hose, they pass the test, put it back on the truck, everybody's happy. This new company comes in and says, "Wait a minute, the data of this doesn't comply with NFPA," and that's what brought the whole thing to light with the amount of hose that, that was not compliant. The last guy, his contract was, "We'll test hose until, unless told otherwise." So-
In 2013, the NFPA standard changed-
Correct.
To state that anything over, what, 30 years, or something like, 25 years?
It's true, each fire department has their own inventory, and, so, maybe that.
Look, each company has their own apparatus and hose on the truck, and each have a hose rack. What I think the chief was going to get a point to was, the, you have a fire, and the hose gets wet, you can't just put it back on the truck, it'll get all moldy, so you need to have almost the equivalent amount of hose that you have on the truck in reserve. So when you go to, after, after a call, you see that the hose, the firehouse is all laid out, drying out, because you can't put it on, it'll get moldy. So that's where a lot of it is too, it's not only the hose that's on the apparatus, you need to have spare hose, so when it gets wet from a fire, you got to let it dry in the firehouse before you put it back on the truck.
All right, moving on, new business session in action, review of North Bramford Police Department bids for architectural and engineer services.
Can I digress real quick, and I think another question I had regarding the hose issue was the fact that we're giving away town property, right, without, I mean, I don't even know if that's allowed, or-
It hasn't been allowed.
Okay. It was suggested, and I just don't know if we can do that even.
Well, I'd say that's in the charter, can do a section on that, town property.
Yeah, right. So, okay, sorry, Mike.
Okay, review NBPD bids for architectural and engineering services.
Yeah, so I put together the memo, you see, that Silver Petrocelli and Associates of Hamden is the low bid, but, you know, I think the question's going to be in this budget process, or in this whole process, whether or not, sure, we have the money for the architectural designs, we don't have the money behind it, in terms of, you know, looking at, at construction, so to speak, if we're going to be looking at, you know, potentially one and a half, as the council set up, to 2 million, um, you know, we, if, if the state passes the revenue, we, we've, our bonded indebtedness comes down, would have come down, but that's all, that's all eaten up now. I don't know if the council is at a point now where you just, you know, what's the, what's the point in going forward with an architectural design for, for something that we don't have the money for construction on? Uh, this might be the, this is the point for you to evaluate whether or not you go forward and, and do this. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, because if you don't, then, you know, the funding there could potentially be, um, used in other areas in terms of capital.
So could we put this on the shelf until the state gets a budget?
Well, that's a good question, but I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to-
How long are these bids for?
How, how, well, you know, you put it on the shelf, how long, how long will those, um-
Numbers hold.
Yeah, how long will the numbers hold?
I don't think you're going to see a budget this year, and I don't think you're going to see much flexibility next year with the state level.
These numbers are all very competitive, and they look good, you know?
Yeah, could we just wait until maybe September, if we vote on this?
Or even August, hold it.
Well, because, but, but part of it is, is, you know, we have the money to go ahead and do the drawings and whatever else, but that doesn't, by the time all of that gets done, we are in budget season for next year. So I look at it as using it as a planning tool to, you know, we know we're not going to build it this year on there, and I know we didn't allocate any money, but-
So the question is, how, let's say we, we went ahead, how long are those figures of what's in the, whatever they come up with, how long are they good? Are they good for a year, are they good for two years?
Well, you know, the, the, I mean, we just, I haven't looked at this, because I was sitting at a-
I have looked at it, you just got, I understand that.
Right, but, you mean, their construction cost?
Right.
Well, I think that's a moving target anyway.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it, I, I, I think, you know, our decision would be, if we move forward with them, you know, designing something, and what it is, but I look at it as using it as a planning tool.
And there is the money in-
Right.
-facility study.
To go ahead and pay, yes.
Yeah, there is also an interesting clause in, in Mike's memo, which says, "If the town council decides not to spend the money for design, it may be possible to petition the state to allow the town to reprogram the funds," meaning it could be used for-
Cloud truck? For, for, you know, any capital item you think of, in terms, and I know Public Works has got a long list of items, but that's what I was thinking.
All right, so aside from getting a planning tool, which is of course always useful-
Yeah.
The likelihood of actually doing the improvements at the police department being what they are, I think is remote.
Remote.
And the possibility that we have $20,000 that we can allocate to something else that we need and will use.
Well, you're talking 100,000.
No, 19,500, 950 is what we would-
Use, yeah.
-affording to this study, so that, if that were reprogrammed for something else that we really needed.
Or in, in, yeah.
What would be budget for this?
Well, yeah, 20, 20, 20,000, 25, 25, I think, but, well, it's sitting in a pot of 100, and I think we talked anywhere from 20 to 25, but my point is, yeah, there's, so this is on the table, you, if you don't do this, there's, there's 19,000, 20,000 right there, but the full pot of 100 for, for a townwide facility study, right?
Is available.
Is available.
So even if we want to live the-
It can't be, it can't be-
We could still, we would still, there's still additional monies in that 100,000.
Yes, yes, yeah, exactly, yeah, and it can't be operational, it's got to be a, you know, a capital item.
Right, so, why can't we do this?
You, you can, you certainly can, I'm just raising the issue as a, you know, something to think about, of-
There's probably a percentage in terms of construction that every year that you can count on, what is it, 2%, 3%?
Oh, an increase, yeah, an increase, yeah.
I mean, I would like, before we decide on this, I would like to wait until we get our numbers from the state budget also.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, why don't we table it till, like, we set September, you know?
Yeah, we only have one meeting in August, so you can-
September, September.
To September, that's fine.
Or until there's a state budget.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to-
Well, so then table it in November.
Well, we're not saying that, Joe, hopefully we'll have one by September, but let's, you know, there's, there's two options, we can table it till September, table it till we have a state budget, you know?
Put it on a September budget, we can always move it-
Yeah, September, yeah, yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion to table?
Make a motion to table it until our September meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is review of Stanley T. W. Tennis Courts and Northford Park Projects.
Yeah, I, I think Lawrence here can speak to that again, I wasn't at the meeting, but, uh, they had made it a decision on moving forward.
Yeah, and I also have a commissioner member here, if anybody has any questions, but on our June 27th meeting, I went back to our commission after getting the RFQs to redo Stanley T. Williams Court, because they came in a lot higher than when I had originally budgeted for, at 70,000. So I went back to the commission to ask them to prioritize whether we look at Stanley T. Williams first, or we look at Northford Park first. After discussion at our meeting, they decided we're going to, they would like to, um, they voted on doing STW first, um, with the money that we have, and we still have enough money left just to do the basketball courts in Northford, and possibly have Public Works just repair tennis or leave tennis as is for right now. So we're looking to take that money that we have, which is the 219, and do the courts at STW, and then go do the basketball courts at Northford, which we haven't gone out to bid for yet.
Okay, I'd, um, like to make a motion that the North Bramford Town Council hereby approves the bid results for the reconstruction of the tennis courts at Stanley T. Williams Community Center, and awards a bid of 138,575 to B&amp;W Paving and Landscaping LLC of Waterford, Connecticut.
Second. Discussion? So this is just to grind it up and repave it? Like, do we have a copy of the bid? Do we have a copy of the bid, or not?
No, I, I don't know what you mean.
So we don't have a copy of the bid? Okay, so, what was our number if we had done it with the post-stress concrete?
Well, they, at Stanley T., they weren't looking to do post-intention.
Right, but what would the number be?
But they're not, they're not, at Stanley T., they're not putting in tennis courts.
Fran said the soil was good enough there.
They're not putting, they're not redoing the tennis courts, they're, what's the use for that?
It's a multi-purpose.
It's a multi-purpose thing, so I think there was going to be one tennis court, and then they were going to do something for basketball, and to rent it out for, um, ice hockey practice, use it for park and rec for the summer program, have portable basketball hoops there so they can use it as an area, so it was, they were just using it as multi-use, and it wasn't to redo all of the tennis courts at Stanley T. But then up at Northford Park, they're redoing the basketball court for post-intention like they did down here.
But we're going to put that on hold?
No, that they're doing, the basketball court, they're going to put the tennis courts at Northford Park on hold for now.
Okay.
The one thing that was added here to draw the cost is, is the whole fencing had it replaced, and that's included in the Stanley T. Williams project, the whole perimeter fencing, it traced to the basketball, coating, and, and one court, one tennis court, and the rest is old.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I second it, I think.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yeah.
Discussion, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Okay, next item is request, uh, lift hiring freeze, library director.
Yeah, just, just need your formal approval.
Make a suggestive motion to the North Bramford Town Council hereby lifts a hiring freeze for the library director's position to allow the town manager to fill a vacancy created by the retirement of Mr. Rob, Bob Hall.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I just have a question at our, under our last, or two meetings before, I remember Counselor Rose was asking a question about the salary, and, uh, you know, the other, the whole package.
Right.
Did I, did we talk about that, no?
No.
Is there any suggestion that the salary would be different than it currently is?
Yeah.
It probably, when you publish it.
It's been in the U.S. forty years.
Right, right.
I mean, we're going to pay a new buyer what we've paid somebody forty years?
Isn't there a range, Michael? Yes, sixty-eight, seventy-two.
Say it again, Mike.
Sixty-eight thousand, seventy-two thousand.
That's cheap.
And they'll be determined upon, in the hiring process, interviewing process, right?
Correct, and which, in which I'll bring names to the council as I, you know, have a department.
Based on experience.
Department head level.
Right.
Nominate, and just like with the planner and the assessor and the other process.
Right, so you'll bring us the top two or three to interview.
The top two, right.
Okay.
All right, it's.
Roll call.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item, request to lift hiring freeze for EDC Director Grant Rider.
I would like to make a motion to table this until our September meeting, maybe we'll get some resolution from Hartford.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is future budget planning initiative.
So, I asked that that be put on, and so I'm going to give us homework, you know? So, I think that in light of where we are with the budget at the state level and at the town level, and with our stagnant grant list, we really need to be looking at next year's budget, you know, as an agenda item every, every meeting, and I think that we need to challenge ourselves to be creative, and we need to challenge the town manager and every department head to be creative, and give us ideas that we can discuss, we can have them run the numbers, and we can put it on the shelf, because these are all going to be, you know, these are all going to be hard, you know, most of them would be a hard, a hard decision to make, but then next, next spring, when we have to, or the new council has to do the budget, and who knows where the state's going to be, you know, hopefully it will be all straightened out, but if they've got to come up with some money, they'll have this, you know, five or ten things maybe that make it through our planning on the shelf with a number on it, and so I'm going to give you, I'm going to give, you know, two of my ideas for tonight, but I'd like this carried on every agenda. So, the first one is, I think that Michael should be bringing in, you know, all the different types of insurance that we talked about having for our employees, we have that, you know, the one group that we, that came in late, too late for us to join, we have the HSAs, we, we should bring in, you know, we should bring in Anthem, and we should bring in anybody that wants to sell insurance that, that, that meets all our union contracts, and the, and as we found out, we need to educate the, the employees and ourselves on what does this mean if we do this, and how much money do we save? So, that's something that we should be doing now, not, not, you know, when we have four days left in our budget, say, hey, let's switch insurance, you know, that.
Or let's now educate somebody.
Yeah, right, let's try and hold a quick meeting and have our employees sign on to this, that, that doesn't work, we need to start that now, and so, so I'd like to, you know, dump that on Michael now for him to do that, and then, you guys know, you know, know me by now, I have an idea a minute, not, not every minute's a good one, but, so, in being creative and, and knowing, you know, you know, we can't, a lot of people's taxes went up five, six, seven hundred dollars this year, we can't, you can't do that year after year after year, so, I would like us to look at, and you know, and we'll have to decide whether it moves forward, and, because it's going to be a lot of work, we look at something like the libraries. Now, you know, Guilford has one, Madison has one, Branford has one, little old North Branford has two, we have a cost to two, it's not two times one, but there is a cost, so, in my wild idea, we, and again, this is to be put on the shelf, hey, if we need, if we're really short of money, you know, could we do this? So, we close one end of town, and I don't know if we close them opposite, you know, like Monday is North Branford, Tuesday is Northford, Wednesday's North Branford, Thursday's Northford, Friday, and then the next week you switch, so, you know, does that get rid of half of the staff? I don't know that. Is it such a small savings that it's not worth it? I don't know that, but we can't ask something like that in our two-week budget deliberation if we're trying to come up with a half a million dollars or, or three million dollars, depending on what the state does to us next year. So, you know, that's, that's one of my creative ideas on what, so, so I would ask the library director, boy, he's glad he's leaving, and the finance director to, to look at that, come back and say, you know what, this only saved seventy thousand dollars, so, we would probably all say that's not worth doing, but if it saves a half a million dollars, we put it on the shelf, and we need a half a million dollars, we then say, okay, you know, this isn't that bad, if I'm in Northford and North Branford's open and I really need to go to the library, I have to drive to the other end of town that day.
To your point, we don't know if we don't ask.
Well, I, I appreciate that.
Seriously.
So, I, I think that we throw this on here, we, you know, to Lynn's point, we keep it short, so, we do, you know, talk about it fifteen, twenty minutes a, a night, come up with an idea, challenge the administrators to tell us what happens, and so you guys know me, I'll have a new idea every meeting, but I, I, so, so, so in saying that, would you guys, you know, would you agree to ask the library director and the finance guy to, to do the work, to come up with the money to do something like that?
Can I suggest, you know, that we have the Planning Goals Subcommittee, maybe we can have that a part of a, a faster meeting schedule and bring in all department heads to ask just that question, you know, whether, like town hall hours, maybe we have to cut town hall hours.
Right.
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll cut, maybe they'll save a million dollars here, maybe it'll save ten bucks, we don't know if we don't ask, maybe if that committee, we can get all interested parties involved and ask these questions, maybe we can expedite some answers that way.
Right, but I still would want it on the agenda so.
I hear you, I hear you.
So, maybe we send the ideas to that committee.
And then we, and we can pick.
And I, and I want to be perfectly clear, I'm not picking on the library.
No, it's just an example.
And me, that's an easy one, because we have two, and I'm not sure one is better than the other, so.
All department heads are going to have to.
They're, they're going to have to, because, you know, we're, especially if we're going to lose, you know, millions of dollars from the state again. But anyway, so that's, that was, that was my main idea for putting that on the agenda.
Well, I, I think because our second meeting, I mean, during the summer, we only meet once in July and August, but our, traditionally, our second meeting of the month is our finance meeting, so, I think that would be an appropriate time to have it at that, at, at that meeting, because then you have time in between, you know, you have a month's time basically, rather than trying to get something in between a two-week, it's normally a two-week period.
Right, yeah.
So, I think if we have it once a month at the second meeting, but it's on the agenda, I, that it, because that's our finance many, meeting, I, I think that would be appropriate.
But also, like, getting back to the first one, the insurance, you know?
Already in the works.
That's good, and it should be. Okay, so you're bringing in people to explain?
Working with the ACES collaborative situation, trying to get some more information on that.
Okay.
Different brokers involved.
Okay. Great. So, again, any guys, you didn't, nobody, nobody stepped up, would you be interested in having, you know, a library director or a finance?
So, is, is this a job that you would want our new library director to do, or our outgoing library director to do, because if it's our outgoing, then.
He has to hurry up.
Well, yes, that we would have to have it on our August agenda meeting.
No, I don't, I don't think it's fair to put it on him for the new library director, you know, it wouldn't be fair to them either, I guess, so.
So, is it least fair to?
But I would certainly like to hear his input on the ideas.
So, I guess before he retires, if he could jot down some ideas, or, I know he's probably getting a list of everything that the new person.
It's wrong with the idea.
It's, it's an issue that we've examined before, so I, I could put something together with the town manager, see what Mike thinks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Want that for August, then?
Thank you, Bob.
You can do it for August.
Bob, I have a question on, related to this, I'd like some clear understanding of exactly what the agreements are, or the requirements are for the properties that the libraries inhabit, because my understanding is that we ended up building two libraries because they, they had discussed consolidating the libraries at that time, and it wasn't possible because of the agreements that were made regarding those properties. So, not, not, at this moment, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I am asking, when you try and respond to some of these questions that were raised tonight, that you give us a clear understanding of any conflicts that would arise with the agreements on, on those properties.
Yeah, those, sure, I mean, we, we, we could, we could try to deal with that, those questions are pretty tricky, because you're dealing with property donations that were made many years ago.
Yeah.
But.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
Yes, for sure. You'd have a lot of questions.
I'm sympathetic to the ideas that Councilor Rose raised, I, of course, am a substantial user of the libraries.
Yeah.
And therefore, I'm quite interested, but my understanding is that some ideas that we might care to pursue are not possible because of the donation agreements, so I, I'd just like that to be very clear in our, in any responses you give.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is North Branford Auditorium Emergency Lighting.
They think they're going to get that solved within the next couple of days.
Yeah, well, that was addressed in our previous meeting.
They have someone coming on Thursday, yeah, a, a company coming on Thursday that they hope that this is the fix.
They think they have a solution.
Right.
So, you know, I wasn't in your earlier meeting, but, you know, this one baffles me, and I don't want to get into it, but I'm just going to warn them, that if they can't fix this, we're going to stick Michael on him, he, he solved the impossible roof leak problem in one year, and this is ridiculous.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to have a degree in technology to understand what they were saying.
What's that?
You'd have to have a degree in technology to understand the explanation.
Alls I know is that the, the emergency lighting code didn't change much since the thing was built, and, and to spend that kind of money and having, and then having people come in there that can't fix it is ridiculous.
I wish you had heard the explanation.
I didn't, I don't, I'm not glad I didn't, I'm just telling you guys that if we have to, if, we're not going to pay having a fire watch there, we're going to fix the things, so, let's hope they get it fixed, but otherwise, we'll take it over, like we did the roof, and we'll fix it.
Can you just keep it, put it under unfinished business, Michael, for, so that, and have an update for August for us?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Or if they find a solution beforehand, please let us know.
Yeah, let us know.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll hear from you Thursday evening.
Right, right.
And next item is appropriation transfers.
The, the larger ones are just to comply with the budget, moving money from where it was budgeted to the operating transfer out, a few small departmental transfers, nothing too crazy.
I'll make the motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers recommended by the town manager and the treasurer and finance director. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is tax refunds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is citizen statements and petitions.
I'd like to make a statement as a citizen, I, I'm sure we have to some extent unnerved Bob Hall with some of our discussions and, and thoughts about the library, and I just, I know some other people have said it, but I'd like to also say, I want to thank him for his years of service, I think he does things above and beyond what any other library director would do, I'm constantly impressed, you go into the library, he's sitting at the desk helping, I just want you to know, I think, I think I can speak for the council saying we appreciate all that you've done and made the libraries wonderful, wonderful facilities with tremendous opportunities for adolescent children, and you're going to be sorely missed.
I second that.
I just hope. I just hope we could find somebody of Bob's cali, caliber.
That was wonderful.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, now we're relying on you to find somebody to fill those shoes, that's your homework.
Any other citizen statements?
To finish off, Mike made a statement earlier, town manager, that he didn't have time for the allocations of originally seventy thousand, which ends up thirty-one thousand for hose, the hose was tested on six-three, and according to the testing agency Top Run, which is all in those files, as mentioned before, all the hosing was tested, fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty feet of hose was passed and approved, seven hundred feet failed, and the hoses that were out of date were removed from services totaling outstanding upward about eighteen thousand feet, so that's three thousand feet, fifteen thousand feet still in operation. There's six trucks, twelve hundred and fifty feet of them, which he addressed in the FOI, that's on each truck, that's seventy-two hundred feet of fire apparatus hose, that's, according to state statutes and all statutes, meets all the code requirements, is on a truck, that's seventy-two hundred feet. There's eight thousand feet left over, no reason to purchase any hose, so it started at seventy thousand, went to thirty-one thousand, and we have eight thousand feet surplus, according on six-three, so Mike, you had plenty of time to present this to the town council. The other thing is the auditorium lights, and I do have an education in the electrical background, I own electrical company and an engineering firm, a simple fix would have been temporary sustainable wall packs, at two, two dollars a square foot, probably cost you less than thirty thousand to have an emergency system standalone, put in and installed in that auditorium, so if it ever fails again, when they do fix it, it won't be out for a year, because the statute says ninety days it must be life safety and repaired, and another thing is, having fire watch is good, but if the power goes out, how are they going to get them out, with flashlights? So, they're actually renting an auditorium knowing it's a life-threatening situation, and the other thing is, in reference to the Juzmandi ruling, I'd like to know when the town council is actually going to act upon having two positions as a deputy fire chief, a fire chief, and our financial director, if you guys can get back to me on that, and that's about it.
I just want to say thank you very much for the vote, I appreciate that, and I do love your idea about everybody getting together and let's really analyze every department everywhere, there's got to be ways to cut, there's got to be ways that we can trim some fat, we can, so, ideas a minute, that's great, let, let's ask the town, let's ask the town, let's ask everybody, you guys all work together, you know, get the department heads, but ask the people in the town too what their opinion is, that's all I want to say, is thank you very much for your vote, I appreciate it.
I won't raise it, Steve Turin Oakville Road, so, just, I jot it down, it'd be really nice, just on behalf of the Park Rec Commission, if you could possibly lift the hiring freeze for our secretary, it's been out since, I believe, May, so, it'd be really nice to fill all of our voids, since we're a little depleted as it is, and give our rec director a full staffing. The other thing is, I brought up, at the commissioners' meetings, there's this ongoing. The other thing is, I brought up, at the commissioners' meetings, there's this ongoing, um, in my personal opinion, deplorable signs at all of our parks and fields. Maybe, um, we could look to, I don't know how possible it is, but maybe an Eagle Scout project could offset and redo some of these signs. We're spending all this money on signs, on fields and maintaining, but you don't know where they are, because you can't read a sign. And then, please, for the love of God, bring some commercial tax base in. We don't need any more open space.
Yeah, was, I, can that be on the, uh, August agenda as well, the, uh, secretary?
We, well, I was gonna just-
What happened with that?
I was gonna comment that, that you did approve that back in February, I think it was a February, March meeting.
I, I thought we did.
Yeah, okay.
You, you tested and advertised.
It was a hundred and, a hundred and nine applicants, uh, getting through that whole testing process, and so we're, we're still, I'm working with Lauren to get through, down to a interview, and that's moving along.
Oh, good.
As well, so.
Times they pan out last let way. I, I don't wanna beat this up. I just wanna just, um, just bring an awareness. At that fire commission meeting, um, the, the fire chief presented extremely well to the, to the commission, and he explained that all the trucks were outfitted to ISO compliant. He also said there was extra hose that he'd divide up into, uh, the, the, the three companies. And he also made a statement that it's not, uh, uh, um, an immediate emergency. So my point, I guess, is, if it was done in the right order, the outcome probably would have been a little bit different, because the town council would have been presented with a much, much more detail. And, and, you know, whether we need fire hose or not, or whether it's a police car or a dump truck, it's, it's the process and the procedures that need to be followed. So you, the town council has the ability to make it, make the proper decisions. I mean, you know, and, and it, it's not fair to you or to the town council unless, unless you push back and require that. I, I just wanted to comment that. The other thing too is, uh, I think, I think your, your, your idea, uh, uh, is a, is a really good idea to get everybody working together and put, you know, uh, some lists together of, of, uh, action items. I think that's awesome, so, thank you.
Real good. If you just, this is one hundred percent citizen. Just look at the driveways all around town, and if you think that driveways don't exceed a hundred, a thousand feet, because that's currently what we have, I believe allegedly, on the fire trucks right now, I mean, it's common sense. There's driveways that are more than a thousand feet, and this is what one person thinks we should carry. How do you want us to put out fire?
Right.
Me too, sorry, just one more thing, one more thing. I realize that the whole police department thing is, uh, you know, there's no money, and I get that. But guys, I took a tour of that police department, and so, I, I'm not pointing fingers, I don't even know the names of all the police commissions, but where has the police commission been all these years? That department, that building is disgusting. I have a picture of every nook, cradle, and corner in that whole place. It's vile. If some major company came in and took a look at that, it would shut the building down. So, again, yes, let's look to the future. Hose is being spread out all over, but the police department's gotta beg for new cars. Something's gotta change, and it's gotta change quick, otherwise, and this mess didn't happen overnight. So I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not. I'm just saying, we need to do different things. We need to look ahead. We need to plan for the future, because otherwise, I see this being a tumbleweed town and everything falling down around. I just-
People have come to me, and they, they have said, a lot of this condition of the police station is just due to a lack of maintenance over the years. I don't know how true that is. I've taken a tour. But I just wonder if, and I don't know the answer to this, if some of these things are the result of lack of maintenance or if this is usual wear and tear. I hope we can find out, you know, before we have to vote on this.
I don't know, but you hear stories of sewage coming up through the floor and things like that, and, and I, I wouldn't sit in any of the chairs. I mean, you can't get chairs? I mean, the chairs are vile, and it's filthy. There's stuff everywhere. It's everywhere. I don't know how you're supposed to work and clean. I, I don't know how it all works. I don't really know. All I know is, from my personal point of view, I took a tour, and I was appalled, and anybody would be. This is where these guys live a good part of their time. You should see how I clean my department at work. I, I, I clean silly, because that's where I live majority of my time.
Your department work was well maintained over the years, is what you're telling me.
Well, yes. I mean, it's, it's newer as well. You can't compare the Shoreline Medical Center in Guilford that was built, built thirteen years ago to the police department that was built. I don't know when.
No, but I've-
But I can tell you it's deplorable, and it shouldn't have gotten to this point.
I agree. I've seen the school, which is older, and I've seen the, the police department, and I would agree that police department-
I mean, there's, there's holes in the walls, there's holes in the ceiling, there's unsafe wires hanging all over the place. If you look at desks, there's-
Why, why, why is that?
I have no idea.
Did they have an answer to that?
It was fine when I left.
I find, I find that very hard to believe.
It was?
I find that very hard to believe.
That place was painted every other year, downstairs, upstairs. That place was fine, I'm telling you.
Listen, I, I-
You could ask Anthony, you could ask anybody else that went through that building.
It's disgusting. So I, I don't know how long ago you left. I have no idea.
Mike, when did you leave?
Yeah, what year was that?
Two thousand and eleven.
So this degeneration is happening.
You know, if they, if they need new chairs, they're the ones that prepare their budget, and they can buy it, because they, they, we don't have control. I mean, they present their budget to-
That's what I'm saying.
Chairs. Right, but I'm just, I mean, she brought up chairs, so if they need some new chairs, they're the ones that the police commission developed that budget, and-
Listen, I said that tonight, and, and I'm not pointing fingers at the current police commission, because this didn't happen overnight. Where has the police commission been? Where has the chief of police been to look out for his people? This is a huge problem, and we can look the other way for the police department, but we do need to look to the future, the near future as to what's gonna take place. You can't live in squalor like that. They spend a lot of time away from their families. Pardon me?
They better clean it. If they don't like the squalor, they better clean it.
So there's how many police officers on at a time? They should be cleaning rather than out on the, on the streets?
There's money in their budget.
For new carpet? There's holes in the carpets?
They have a cleaning service in there. They transfer so much money at the end of the year, they can't fix carpets, they can't buy chairs. Come on, Lynn. This is two thousand and seventeen.
All I'm saying is-
They can fix whatever they wanna fix.
So whose fault is it?
It's the management's fault. Whose fault would it be?
So, management is chief, lieutenants, I mean-
You pick the management you wanna pick up, but that place could be dressed up.
I'll go in and clean.
Maybe we need a townwide barn raising, uh, committee to go in and clean it.
It would take a, it would take a village.
I just built a barn in Northford the other day.
All right. All right, well, good night, guys, thanks.
Make a motion to move to executive session.
Second.
And who do we need? Town manager, town attorney, anyone else?
Who was the second on that for?
Me.
Anthony.
Dan.